Yeah, because you can't, right Steve?
It would be a little awkward. As potential it would be a bit awkward.
Unless you want to.
You save that for the new person.
Not yet.
Surprise!
So Sandra, if that is the ultimate. Do you have your school board associate delegate?
I guess I was last year. I wasn't having a say on doing that.
I'll do that again. Thank you. Unless somebody else wants to. Wellness committee?
Sure, yeah.
So this committee, if everybody's okay, I'd like to stay in that. I'm gonna be myself. Safety committee, Steve, you wanna stay on?
Sure. I'm there anyway.
Those are all our committees. Thank you. Get the minutes for the regular meeting March 5th, 2019. Everybody get an opportunity to look over them.
Mm-hmm. I didn't find anything.
Take a motion to a speaker. Senator, yeah. All in favor? Four zero, thank you. Close your privilege of the floor number one. David, you have anything? Okay. Thank you. Communications, we did have a communication from Renee.
Yeah, it's Renee. Thank you. Everybody have a chance to see that?
Mm-hmm. Appreciate that. That was nice.
It was very nice.
Any other communications?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Administrative report, principal's report, Shannon?
So you have in your packet a enrollment report, but as usual, it is not accurate. By the time that it was submitted to the map, we are actually at 1:59 and we have two additional students kind of on deck where we've gotten phone calls of people that are saying that they're moving our way. So 1:59, we're the potential of two additional students. For my principal's report, we have a busy few months coming up. I just want to remind everyone that the penny sale is this Saturday. Mrs. Avery, Mrs. Belier, and the rest of the Ashland Teachers Association have been working like crazy to get this ready. Lot of great gift baskets, a lot of excellent prizes, so please come and join the fun. That is on Saturday from 5 to about 8:30 by the time we get done. We have the PSU Tiger Theater coming on April 10th, which is new. We haven't done that in, at least since I've been here, so I knew in the past we've had them come, so we're really excited to have them come. And that will be kindergarten through 5th grade, we'll be seeing that presentation on April 10th. NJF's induction ceremony is the 11th, which is always an excellent night. We have some really great guest speakers that are coming. I believe Nurse Ellen Young has returned, so that would be, that's gonna be great to see her and have her. She's known our 7th and 8th graders, their whole career here, so it will be a good night for her, and we'll be happy to have her back. We're still working hard on Wandercuck and getting ready for that. There'll be some kind of publicity going out into the community and being sent home to parents very soon, so as that is taking shape, it had to wait until we could actually have some shape to the project before I could share it with, share it out with people in the community. So looking forward to that. That's gonna happen the night of the spring concert, the Wandercuck performance will be before the spring concert with a break for dinner and then the spring concert after. And also, I just wanna let you know, May 6th, 9th, and 10th, we have kindergarten registration. It's already been posted and we're already collecting kind of information about our students. Staff of the month this month, Katie Chamberlain, Teresa Merrifield, and Morgan Niles. They all did an incredible job at the, putting together the play performance. It was very funny and very well done, thanks to Mr. Brent who also did all of the, kind of the audio and sound effects and everything for the kids. Math teacher search committee process, we interviewed two applicants today. We have another one scheduled for tomorrow with a potential fourth that we are just waiting to reconnect with. We received 11 applications for the receptionist position, so we are going through those and we'll be scheduling interviews for next week. We are planning testing for middle school students, the New Hampshire State testing the week of May 13th. Grades 3 through 5 will be the following week. We are looking at right now the Math in Focus 2020 Revision Program. They sent us a sample packet, teacher packet or teacher bag actually full of all of the materials for each grade last week, so all of the math committee members are reviewing all of those content, all of that content, and looking forward to trying to get into the new online program that there that goes along with that. That's a new addition. We don't have access to it yet, it's not even available, but that will really be important as we're looking at updating. I have a brief math team recap from Mr. Gagnon. This year, the Math Along team made huge progress. During their Tuesday practice sessions, they reviewed previous competition questions and worked through how they should approach each question. Team members had ongoing competition through the Khan Academy program. Progress illustrated on the ceiling throughout the building. If you've walked through and seen the little faces on these popsicle sticks with a magnet, they're moving through the building and the farther they get in the Khan Academy program, so it was pretty funny. Let's see, this season, they earned the highest point total and finished, had their best finish to date, which was third place in Guilford on the 14th, which is fantastic, especially because of Guilford. And they had an outstanding season of perseverance in Guilford, so that has been another excellent experience. It just keeps getting better for the kids, and Mr. Gagnon is a fantastic coach. Lastly, I attended the Plymouth Regional High School Future of Education event, which is part of their NEASC credentialing process. It was a great event, there were at least 150 people. There are community members, parents, students, staff, SAU administrators from the other buildings, and SAU staff, the superintendent and assistant superintendent. It was a really great process led by Tanya Orlando and Craig Willey, teacher and specialist director for the building, and it was really a great way to, where we work to identify skills and dispositions necessary for students graduating that high school into the 20, into the world of the 21st century. One of those things that their graduates need to be successful. So it was the first meeting, there are more to come, but it was just very well-run and I think a great process, so I think you're gonna have some good results from that. So I'm excited to be a part of that. Other than that, I hope to have 3D printer group, the kids that built the 3D printer from the kit, in to show you what they've done, and also in May, a playground presentation where we have the drawings and 3D drawings and all that stuff ready to go. So, good stuff coming.
What's the Tiger Theater?
It is a program, let's see, do you wanna talk a little bit about it? I know, well, didn't A can do it?
Tiger, he did a little bit of it, yeah. It's an anti-bullying program that Trish Lindbergh developed at New State University, and it includes university students, some staff, and some, usually some local students, elementary students.
It can be a great performance, and it's really engaging, and it's totally centered on the kids, getting the kids to recognize behaviors and stuff, so. And it's new, it's been revised kind of their whole approach, and so I'd be interested to see that, I'm sure. They always do a nice job, so that will be a great opportunity.
I have a question. So the Math in Focus online module that the teachers are going to, is it, so are they going to be giving some like online training, or does it learn how, you were saying that they can access it online?
So with the new, with the update to the program, the 2020 edition, there's a whole online piece that is really about tracking students. You can assign assessments online, there are modules, learning modules they can do, there are games that they can do. We really don't, all we have is kind of like the pictures and the profile thing that they've sent. No one has seen it yet. The trainer that we had come in January though said that she had to do a training on that piece in February, so I was hoping to reconnect with her and have her be able to tell us more about it, because you can't even see a sample yet, but it's just supposed to kind of, almost what we do with Dreambox, where it's like that adaptive learning and you have the data and you can use the data to target instruction. I'm hoping that it offers kind of the same level of information for teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
When is the 10th and the 11th? What days are those?
What day is that on?
I'm sorry?
What day is that on?
On April?
April.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
April 10th is a Wednesday, April 11th is a Thursday.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Trish. I'm sorry, thank you, Shannon. Yeah, for the situation. Finals report, yeah?
You have in your packet a general fund budget report for the current school year. Since your last report, we have spent down or encumbered an additional $9,936. 95.65% of the budget has been spent or encumbered at this time. We're in a slightly better position than we were last year at this time, about 0.3%. The deadline for encumbrances is April 15th, and I was speaking with Jackie today about parts of the budget that we had some questions on, and she and Shannon will work to further refine the budget. If we were to end the school year right now, if we closed the vote today, we'd have a fund balance of approximately $100,000, taking into account what was voted from fund balance within the warrant articles of $15,000. We'll have a much cleaner number for the May meeting, and we will also bring for a vote withdrawal from the health reserve in May.
Is that gonna be the last one, or is there one more after that?
It's one more.
Any questions on that, Trish? Facilities update?
I think Mrs. Bartlett and I would do a little bit of an update based on the facilities meeting that we had and some of the safety work that has been done and is scheduled to be done on April.
So we have, all of the doors in the gymnasium have been replaced, reconnected with security except for one that we're waiting on a piece for. We have several things scheduled for the week of April vacation. Safety film will be put on the inside of the windows. We're hoping to have the security camera update and the connection, the fiber connection to the gymnasium so that we can also put the security camera system in the gym during April vacation, and also the update of the, kind of our door release system for the visitors' entrance and the main entrance. I don't know what it's called, like it's like a, yeah, the, that. Hoping to get that over April vacation as well.
Does that kinda include the voice?
Yes, yep, yep. So all of those pieces, we have put in on the purchase order for those, and hope to get that all taken care of so that it can happen during April vacation. We're hoping to have everything that we possibly can have done, ordered, prepared, and installed over April vacation. Some of it may spill into early May, but our goal is to really have everything wrapped up from our safety grant as close to we can as to May, to the beginning of May. So I think we're in really good shape as far as scheduling people to come, because we have a lot of different companies coming to do some of these things, and we've worked really hard to make sure that we've connected all the dots and done what we had to do and get all the bids, quotes, and everything that we needed, quotes, not bids, I'm sorry, so that we can make good choices about that and fiscally responsible choices for the grant. And I'm excited for all of these projects, I think it's gonna be great. Aside from that, we have like gym courtside windows that will wait till the 1st of July or after, and several little projects in the, kind of the bathroom and the entryway of the gymnasium, and then also boiler project, chimney, sludge removal, those are all things that are end of school year and summer projects.
It's gonna be busy here this summer.
Yes, very. That's okay.
Thank you. Voting results?
So I have results, I can pass those out. We have included the results for the Ashland School District as well as the Penny Baker School District, I thought you might like to see those. And then just attached to the documents that I just shared with you is also just a copy of the MO new with SAU 48, just to make sure people have a copy of that. We'll also get you a copy of the one with Plymouth Regional High School as well. I don't know if there's any questions? Was it very?
Brian Chalmers.
So he did, he did, yes, so as the treasurer, Brian is, sorry, that should've been.
Brian Chalmers won the regular.
And we will look into, I know there was some conversation whether or not to change that to maybe potentially a three-year position, as well as the same for a moderator, which we are still.
Yep, in the school, in the district. Those, those three positions, and alternate it, so one.
Staggering.
Staggering, yeah, exactly, not all three, and enough, not the.
Yeah.
Now we don't have to keep rerunning it every year. Thank you. Okay, next item is business of the board, national school board meeting schedule, which is in your packet.
And that follows similar pattern that has been in place. We typically remember there are additional meetings that get added with the budget scheduled usually as we get closer to that, we do go over schedule for the board and look at people's availability at that time. But it is following the 1st. We did leave July as tentative, just, you know, potentially, and that gets impacted with the 4th of July. Typically, the board is taking July off, but it could be.
With all the activities gonna be happening in this summer, that may be the possibility we need to get together.
Absolutely.
Problem, so I didn't want to not have that.
I'll be here.
You can always eliminate it later, but it's a common schedule. So we take a motion to approve that. Senator, two to the second. All in favor? Four zero, thank you. Teacher, teacher staff appreciation week?
So there were some earlier conversations about doing a similar kind of experience for staff that the board put on last year. We did a nice, arrangements were made on the board's behalf to have a nice luncheon. I think the common man had helped to cater that, and that's what the card going around now is, is to get all those ducks in a row.
We have a card that we have diligently, so if we could have everybody sign it at all times.
And typically, that comes out of board supply funds.
Thank you. We'll do the same thing. Everybody okay with that?
And that was, Shannon, was that, was, I think I recall you saying it was appreciate, or?
Oh, it was good. Awesome, yeah. They loved it. It's just such a nice gesture, the teachers love it. It's great.
With the food as well. It's a gesture, I think, but the food might stink and then it's all lost.
But kudos to Marilyn and Jackie who worked together to, to make sure that was pulled off nicely.
I think it works well, the fact that it's not hot food, there's cold, everybody come and go, everybody having different schedules, it still works for everybody. Thank you. This is the superintendent, general operating expenses.
That's really mis tempurita. There is nothing unusual on the manifest. Happy to try to answer any questions.
I didn't have a question, I had a thought. Consolidated communications, we have a dedicated fire alarm phone.
Yes, we have to have copper lines for that.
We do?
Yes.
Can't do a fiber optic. That's not a question, it wasn't so much a bill, it was a function.
Why we're still, yes, there's a reason.
Does anybody have anything? Then we'll take a motion to approve the family manifest, 10:15. Second, Senator? All in favor? Four zero?
Thank you.
Tentative end of year schedule, that's also in your packet.
That's attachment eight. I was sharing some feedback that I did hear from the Teachers Association was considering a half day on the 20th of December. So I would offer that, I think that, it's a long week, it's a full week for folks, and probably everyone is ready for break to start.
And you haven't picked the early release dates yet?
Yeah, we usually don't, we wait until we get back, everyone back together, even at the end of this year to identify them, and then we put it on all the calendars that go home.
Okay. And what we identify that as a half a day, just that.
Right, I think, right, we'll make sure we identify that.
Is everybody okay with that being a half a day?
Plus the other ones.
So I'll take a motion to approve the draft calendar as we just amended it for a half a day. Second, Steve? Anything else on that? If not, all in favor? Four zero? Thank you. That's a many.
We have it twice.
No, one is the end of this year.
Oh, the end of this year, sorry, we just do.
Oh, we just did.
I jumped ahead, I'm sorry. You just did the 1920.
Yeah, you're right.
And Shannon does have a draft of the end of year for this year. My apologies.
That's the 1920. 2018, 2019, end of year.
Do you wanna walk people through this?
Sure. So our original schedule had us out, our last is going to be Monday, June 10th, and the teacher workshop day being the following day, June 11th. We have five snow days this year, knocking on wood right now.
Me too.
So the proposal is that we continue that week extending four days so that the student last day is Friday, June 14th. That continues to be an early release. We do graduation that evening, which would leave the teacher's typical end of year workshop day and an additional day to make five total days that the staff has to make up. So we would have two days the following week with teachers and paras, and the students would be done on Friday, the 14th.
I think that works. I can comment for just that money for half a day was kind of a question.
It was good planning, though.
Maybe having the graduation on a Friday night is probably easier for extra people to come and attend.
I would agree, yes.
Come in for the weekend. Is everybody good with that? So take a motion to approve the end of year 2018, 2019. Steve? And Sanders, or something? All in favor? Four zero? Maybe you're on schedule. Okay. And we've got, let's see, three policies for the first reading. Policy number two, I guess numbers doesn't need to be there. Policy ECAF, audio/video surveillance on school buses. And there's attachment in your packet. Take a motion to approve. Senator, you have a second? I had a couple things on that. As I'm reading through it, in a lot of places, it says recording, 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 but then all of a sudden in paragraph F and G, it goes to audio slash video, audio slash video, but also in G, it gives her the audio and goes recording, so I was recommending maybe up in the first paragraph, second sentence, authorize the use of audio/video recording, parentheses here, here and after, recording or recordings, and then change everything throughout the thing so also is either recording or recordings, just so that it'll be consistent.
Yeah, it's cleaner.
That's all I have on that. So is everybody okay with that change? I don't think we need to send it back, I think we can just do it ourselves. I'll take a change on that, probably need to pack out the vote and take a, I don't know. After we vote to them.
You could just say amended. Has amended, yeah.
So I'll take a motion to remove the motion that was on the table, I'll take a motion to approve the second reading. That's not second.
First.
It's not the third.
Says second. Is this the second?
Yeah. Marilyn, is it a second?
That's a typo, that's a question.
It is a first.
It is a first.
So we take a motion to approve the first reading of policy ECAF, audio/video surveillance on school buses as amended. Yeah. Senator, yeah. Senator has a motion, that is a second. All in favor? Four zero? Thank you. The next one is policy IJOC, volunteers that falls in the community relations. I had a couple things on that, I'll just talk about that first. The second parent, second line in the first paragraph, I put the word principal. I was thinking it should be principal or designate, because our principal is pretty busy and if it's at those, the mountain, you know, I may not be able to get up the waterhill to talk to somebody, but there's somebody that's in charge that the principal can designate, so I think that will be in there. And then the same thing down where it says in red, where staff members, showers, cross offices, principal or designate, probably there also, and then will, that allows the principal the flexible to, flexibility to delegate. Instead of putting it all on her plate, and that's all I have on that one. Everybody okay with that? I'll take a motion to approve the first reading of policy IJOC, volunteers as amended. Second, Senator? All in favor? Four zero? Thank you. Next one is policy GBCD, data governance and security. This is a general question opposed to Mary. This should be referenced in the parent-student handbook.
We certainly can do that. It seems reasonable.
We did it, we did it with the bus stuff, I didn't know if we should, in the parent-student handbook, reference this policy.
We can plug right in.
Well, the policy is gonna be big.
The plan is going to be, I think, too big, but I think the policy assures people. We're in a time where.
We won't put the plan in, we'll put the policy in. And then if they wanna see the plan, then the policy will direct them to it. So I didn't know if we should put it in somewhere, I'm not sure where.
We could, we can just.
We talked about it, I think, up at the top.
Presented annually to the school board and I think after that first sentence, or in that first sentence.
School board and including the parent-student handbook.
And we can.
So until they say whatever we want.
We can finesse that a little bit and bring that back for a second reading.
Wait, are we saying that the plan is.
The policy.
So we wanna make sure.
That would be a separate statement.
Policy. And I just wanted to have something in the policy that's said that's gonna be in the handbook. So is everybody okay with that change? So I'll take a motion to approve first reading of policy GBCD, data governance and security as amended. Yeah, Senator? All in favor? Four zero?
I would like to just commend Lester, he did, you know, he was able to make his way through a lot of noise and recommend this, and this is really what the law is asking, and that's what a policy really should reflect rather than getting commangled with the plan, especially where a plan has to be updated annually. If you have it in the policy, then you're having to.
Update the policy.
Update policy, you know, and that gets a little, as we know, cumbersome. The plan, the board will need to vote on that by the end of June, per the law. This is our first kind of draft, you know, as we kind of work through the, all the requirements. You know, I think it's approving version one, you know, as it's a plan, I think it will evolve and change. You know, there is some good guidance that is starting to come out. It was very slow guidance from the state originally, the law was passed, but the framework wasn't really in place. Lester has a real map for being able to, I think, go through a lot of noise and come out with what's most important, so that's a real exceptional skill, so I'd really like to commit.
to commend him for that.
Thank you. And privilege of the floor, number two, David, second shot. Announcements Tuesday, May 7th, Plymouth Regional High School is where our next meeting will be. If you could, let me go back for the video, transfer that information that will actually get to high school on our next meeting. Thank you. School tour is scheduled for 5:45. Bruce Parsons or somebody will take us around and show us the, if you haven't seen her already, the additions and the modifications and the upgrades to quite a bit of the school. And the school board meeting will be at 6:30, so there'll be no policy.
And food?
There'll be food after.
Yes. Special mystery. What date is this?
What date was that, Glenn?
May 7th, first Tuesday, our regular, our regular scheduled meeting, but instead of here, it'll be at the high school. 5:45 for the tour and 6:30 for the regular meeting. My guess is that if you can't make the tour, somebody, because Bruce is pretty proud of it, as he should be, the facility out there, and that if afternoon work there early, I'm sure it will be a quick tour of the school.
Or other arrangements some should be made.
We do have one non-public for staff personnel for tonight, and then we would come out at that point and do a nomination.
Correct.
So the only thing left, David, would be coming out for nomination of staff. So I'll take a motion to go into non-public. Steve, second is dead.